All right, seeing that we have a quorum, I will call September sixteenth, twenty twenty five meeting of the Waynes Town City Council to order. Welcome all guests, and I'm hoping everybody had the opportunity to sign in. If not, please do so. And then let's stand, and Mr. Crupper will give the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance.
Father in heaven, thank you for the day. You blessed us with another day of life and bring us all here together tonight to conduct the business of our city that is conducted in a fair and honorable and respectable way. And tonight, as we welcome two new members to our council that's been with us in the past just to continue to bless all of us, to live. Forgive us for sins and forgive us where we fail. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so now I have the pleasure of giving the oath of office to two new but old council members, and then we will have the oath of office for our new zoning administrator. So we'll come down. We can come right up here. Left hand on the Bible, right hand. Do you swear to me?
Aye.
Rick Skinner?
Aye, Rick Skinner.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth?
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky?
And to be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof?
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability?
And I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability.
The position of Williamstown City Council member according to law?
The position of Williamstown City Council member according to law.
And I do further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution?
Since?
And that you solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, I being a citizen of this state?
I being a citizen of this state.
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state?
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons within this state.
Nor out of it?
Nor out of it.
Nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge?
Nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge.
Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending?
Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry? Robert Perry is next. Left hand, right hand, raise. Do you swear to me? Aye, Robert Perry.
Aye, Robert Perry.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth?
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky?
And be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof?
So as long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully execute?
And I will faithfully execute.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
The position of Williamstown City Council member?
To the best of my ability to Williamstown City Council member.
According to law?
According to law.
And I do further solemnly swear?
And I do solemnly swear further.
That since the adoption of the present Constitution?
Since the adoption of the present Constitution?
I being a citizen of this state?
I being a citizen of this state.
Have not fought a duel?
Have not fought a duel.
With deadly weapons?
With deadly weapons.
Within this state nor out of it?
Within this state nor out of it.
Nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge?
Nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge.
Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending?
Nor aided or assisted in any person thus offending.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we're going to swear in, our new zoning administrator. His name is Jason Payne.
I think it was Bob. Come here just a minute. You can do it. We can move to the next item.
Yeah, if you want to do that, that would be fantastic. Are they coming around?
I think yes, someone right there.
I'm going to run.
You did. They are coming.
All right. The fan club is here. Erica, you want to hold the Bible for him if you want?
Um, I think I might be able to hold the check.
Left hand on the Bible, right hand up. You ready to see that gets one? Okay. I, Jason Payne?
I, Jason Payne.
Do solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth?
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And be faithful and true?
And be faithful and true.
To the Commonwealth of Kentucky?
To the Commonwealth of Kentucky.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof?
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability?
And I will faithfully execute to the best of my ability.
The position of Williamstown zoning administrator?
The position of Williamstown zoning administrator.
According to law?
According to law.
And I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear.
That since the adoption of the present Constitution?
Since the adoption of the present Constitution?
I being a citizen of this state?
I being a citizen of this state.
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons?
Have not fought a duel with deadly weapons.
Within this state nor out of it?
Within this state nor out of it.
Nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge?
Nor have I acted as second in carrying a challenge.
Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending?
Nor aided or assisted thus person offending.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back to having a full council. That's great. Um, let's talk about some announcements. So we do have Music on Main Street on Friday starting at six P. M. We do have the Marigot Day Festival this Saturday, the twentieth, ten to five. You've seen four thirty, five. It's somewhere in there. We will have the parade at ten A. M. and the, um, entertainment starts at eleven with Marty Brown, and then after Marty Brown is Top Disc band, which I believe is at one fifteen. So it should be a great day. A lot of preparation for Marigot Day, a lot of vendors. There'll be some great food and just a great time. And I think right now the weather is going to hold up, so I think it's going to be great. Then we have the Bluegrass Festival next Saturday, the twenty-seventh, from three to ten P. M. So a lot still going on before this summer's over, and I hope everybody can make some of the activities. I want to move on to the mayor's update. And before I really start on that, I want to point something out. With all the events that happening, happened in the city, whether it's Main, Music on Main, Marigot Days, we had Farm to Table this past Friday, which was a great success, Bluegrass Festival, all the things that happen downtown, the city employees that we have do a lot. And, you know, the, whether it's changing the whole downtown, where we had tables and chairs set up, anything from the bollards that were in front of the hotel, the porta potties, the cleaning of the streets, just making sure everything is perfect for the guests to have a great time, that's done by our city workers, a lot of different departments, mainly the street department. So I want to give a shout out to the city employees and just say thank you, the work that's done administratively, just to make sure everything's put in line. So I just want to make sure the city understands that and appreciates that and say thank you every now and then. To the council, I wanted to give an update on the personnel policy. I did tell you that I would have something for you here tonight. I do not. We're still waiting on the pay grades and pay ranges for the personnel policy, and we did speak with, I forget her name, but Cindy, and we should have them tomorrow. So we will plan on talking about it at the next regular city council meeting. Also, the, on Friday, this Friday, we will have a public hearing at noon to set the property tax rate for next year, and we will be having that at twelve o'clock. Immediately following that will be a special council meeting to read, the first reading of the ordinance on the tax rate. That takes two readings, and we will have the first one on Friday at twelve fifteen. So for the new council members, we have a meeting at twelve fifteen. And by the way, we are keeping the tax rate, whether it's real property or the personal property, at the same rate as this past year. So I think that's the good news. But I do encourage everybody to come if should they like to. The last update that I have is on the zebra mussels at the water plant. I just want everyone to know that, well, as you know, we sent out requests for qualifications. Those documents are due back on the twenty-fifth, where we'll have, we'll open the bids and take a look at them from the engineering firm. Can't do, we're at the point where we can't go forward with anything until we get that back and award that, award the vendor. We continue to go down two paths, one for a straight-out grant through Northern Kentucky Ad and one, a KIA loan at low, low interest. I did speak to Grace Herman the other day, and, you know, we, we're in a good position to get the grant. Of course, nobody can guarantee anything, and we're in a good position to get the loan. And at this point, we just have to go down the path. I will also tell you, the request for qualifications, the engineers themselves, part of it is for them to find funding sources. So we're keeping all our options open, and we've not committed the city to anything at this point. We're just going down that road. The, as an update for the zebra mussels, I think I told you a couple months back, they were really going down. They are coming back. I don't, the peroxide that we were using to keep them down, I don't know, because of the heat, whether it's dissolving quicker, but they are coming back, not as bad, not as bad as they were a year ago. But it's, we still need to, this problem has not gone away. And the issue is, again, so everybody remembers, the, the pumps that the, that come in from the lake, the water, we need screens around the pumps, because there is damage being done. So it's not a problem that's going away, something that we need to address, and hopefully we will address it, the least financial impact for the city. Any questions on any of that? Superintendent's reports, assuming everybody had a chance to go through them. Are there any questions, concerns, comments? No questions, concerns, or comments? Okay. We had the corrections and approval of minutes for regular council meeting of September second. Again, I hope everybody went through them this weekend. I'll entertain a motion, and then we can discuss any corrections.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, or to, yeah, accept the minutes as presented.
Motion made by Councilor Skinner. Is she a second?
I'll second that.
Motion second by April Fabella. Discussion on the minutes. Hearing, no discussion. Roll call, please.
Kim Crupper?
Yes.
April Fabella?
Yes.
Ronnie Maynes?
Yes.
Bob Perry?
Present but not voting.
Rick Skinner?
Yes.
And Jenna Smith?
Yes.
Okay, minutes are accepted as written. Marigot Day Committee updates. Is Jason still here?
No.
Okay, so in your packets, you see two Marigot Festival Committee meeting minutes for August fifteenth and August, excuse me, and September fifth. I'll let you read through them, and you can ask me if any questions, and hopefully I will know the answer. If anybody has seen the new, the new stage, the renovated stage, it really looks good. We'll be using that for the first time, renovated for Saturday, because I think everyone will, it looks almost brand new. On those updates, you'll see a budget that was done. We started with a little fourteen thousand dollars that was budgeted. We are just about at the end of the budget. The numbers you see are not necessarily the final numbers. They will not go any higher, but some of them may be less. And I, to my, best of my knowledge. Okay, moving right along. Any questions so far? Okay, so we're at, we're at new business. First reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, amending the city Williamstown flood damage prevention ordinance in accordance to KRS sixty-seven dot zero eight four. So a week or two ago, I got a call from, or I got, I got an email regarding FEMA, an invitation to enroll in the National Flood Insurance Program, and I was not sure what that meant. I sent it to Mr. Morgan and asked him just to do a little research, give me an idea if this is something that we need to get involved in. And he spoke with a gentleman from KLC, is that correct?
Yes.
And they said definitely you need to be a participant in this because it affects the homeowners regarding flood insurance, should there be a catastrophic flood. And they would not be able to collect from FEMA if we're not enrolled in it. That being said, it takes a couple, we needed ordinances to put us in that position. We sent that to Luke. He said we're just about there, and we did, he recommended that we pass this ordinance that you see before you, and that would put us into adherence, and then at that point, we would be able to join the FEMA flood insurance program. Is that correct, Luke?
Yes, sir.
And before Luke starts, I want to make sure, and I'm sure he's going to read it, but I want to make sure the council is aware that one of the changes in this ordinance would prevent mobile homes from being built in the one percent flood zone district. And I want to make sure the council was aware of that when he goes to it. Mr. Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members said a couple things before I get going on reading the summary of this ordinance. Good news, I'm not going to read all thirty pages of it, but this is Good news, I don't, I'm not going to read all thirty pages of, of it, but this is a document that the council passed back in 2010. The, the vast majority of this ordinance has been on Williamstown's books for fifteen years. Most of the, uh, changes in this are updates to, uh, floodplain information, and as the mayor said, this is in coordination with, uh, officials at FEMA, as well as in, uh, State Department of Water. So, uh, I will, uh, read here the, uh, summary of this ordinance. It's an ordinance of the City of Williamstown, Grant County, Kentucky, amending the flood damage prevention ordinance. Now, therefore be it ordained by the City Council of Williamstown, Grant County, Kentucky as follows. Whereas the City Council of the City of Williamstown, Kentucky, sees fit to update its ordinances dealing with flood damage prevention, in an effort to make the residents of Williamstown eligible to obtain flood insurance. Whereas this updated ordinance shall apply to all areas of special flood hazard within Williamstown, as identified by the Federal Insurance Administration, and mandates that no structure or land in said areas shall thereafter be located or extended, converted or structurally altered without compliance with its provisions. Requires the obtaining of a permit from the mayor as administrator in the Kentucky Division of Water prohibiting manufactured homes within areas of special flood hazard. Requires that all new construction and substantial improvements be constructed with materials and utility equipment resistant to flood damage. Provides that in all areas of special flood hazard, the lowest floor of any residential structure constructed or substantially improved shall have the lowest floor elevated to or above base flood elevation. And provides penalties of one hundred dollars and assessment of costs and expenses for each day of violation of this ordinance continues. The full text of the ordinance is on file in the office of the Williamstown City Clerk, where it may be inspected. This is given its first reading at special session the sixteenth day of September, 2025. There's a line for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest. Okay. That's the summary, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Morgan. Uh, it's the first reading, but are there any questions at this time?
Do we have a designated area for that as we, I've never heard of that before. Do we have an area that we know about?
We do. Um, which is why they, uh, yeah, this is...
It's the last page, I believe.
Oh, okay.
It's the color page, it's steam mill, France and Clark Street, just a little on the bottom, there on Clark Street.
Okay.
Very much around our sewer pipe, in that area.
Any other questions at this time?
When we have our second reading, maybe we ought to get a copy of this ordinance in our packet.
You can get it in your packet?
No.
Isn't this it?
That's it, yeah.
This whole big thing right here.
I got this.
That's it.
He just read the summary.
Okay.
Right? It wasn't right.
Well, it's different than what I've got, but I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a paper copy of the summary.
Right.
I don't think.
Yeah.
No, you don't, you don't have a copy of the summary, but that is the ordinance.
Right.
All right, Bob, we need to clear it up, Kim, just so I can know.
That's fine.
Okay, next thing I'm going to ask for is a resolution. So, another email I received regarding a, uh, new, new national opioid, opioid settlement, Purdue direct settlement. And what it's asking is, there are funds, and funds that we have received, although already, by the way, um, that we need to, to, just need to account for, um, it's in our general fund, but any, so, but with not knowing, I got this a couple of weeks ago. Again, I asked, uh, Luke about it, he goes, yes, you need to join this, um, in order to, one, you've received the funds, so you don't want to give them back, and two, um, if you participate in it, it's not required, but it's, most of the cities in town, in towns in Kentucky are involved in it. Uh, that is why I had the resolution done. And then I recently received, I think I received this a day or two ago, there is another one that's being, uh, generated, uh, similar to the old one, that's looking for our participation that I need to, uh, if we want to participate, to sign off on. Uh, the resolution authorizes the mayor to participate in these two settlements, uh, in any, I believe the way I read it, anything to do with these two settlements going forward to, to, uh, gather the funds and account for them. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Do I need to read it or any, or do you want to read it?
Well, if I, if I may?
Yes, please.
As, as the mayor's saying, the, there are these various settlement lawsuits, there's a variety of lawsuits across the country, there's with class actions, much of it has to do with cities, counties, hospitals, uh, just a variety of plaintiffs, entities that have, uh, paid out a lot of money over the years to deal with the costs of dealing with the opioid epidemic. Police, first responders are, uh, and a prime example of the costs that the city here has had to incur, um, in man-hours, as well as in medications, uh, responding to significant and serious problems that take them away from other issues, that, that need response. And as the mayor mentions, the one that's presently at issue, the one we got, the, he got the email about, uh, last week, is one involving Purdue Pharma, that's the, the big name here, the Sackler family and all of that, that you probably have heard about, and this is dealing with billions of dollars across the country. This is one that, uh, I believe a motion from the council to authorize the mayor to enter into that settlement is appropriate. There are also various other class actions, we got another one today, and this is in the Alvegen, um, lawsuit, this is also dealing with opioids, and, um, I'm contacting the law firm that got ahold of the mayor last week regarding Purdue to verify just exactly what this involvement is, because we don't have the documentation to see where things are, and I just want to make sure that we have, uh, the proper engagement letters and all of these agreements in place, um, with these various firms, because they're, typically these firms are, are national, uh, and they're representing people across the country. I just want to make sure that that's the case. But the issue before the council right now is authorizing the mayor to enter into these lawsuits and enter, and then later, presumably, enter into the settlements to, uh, realize the, the money that these settlements offer. As the mayor mentions, there's accounting frequently, typically, understandably, with these, uh, settlements to make sure where the money goes. Frequently, it's designated for first responders, can also go to other, uh, to social programs, to rehabilitation, and other matters like that. But generally, that's earmarked for specific programs, not general funds. So, the, um, I think the issue for the, the council is whether, uh, you want to, um, discuss, uh, whether you want to, to move, uh, to vote to authorize the mayor to enter into these settlement, into, into these lawsuits, rather, uh, notifying the council of the lawsuits as they're entered into and settlements as well.
Thank you. Any, any comments?
So what you presented there, Mr. Morgan, in, in these settlements, because you made it clear that if you receive funds from this, it does not go in the general fund. So do you set up a, a fund that strictly has the opioid settlements from various, uh, lawsuits, class, class actions and whatnot? So do you earmark it to go to, to your police department for, to enhance their protection, or first responders? How do you address that? Is that what that's for?
So, from what I've gathered, and this was briefly talked about at Northern Kentucky Ad, uh, last meeting, um, the majority of the cities are using it for things like buying Narcan, uh, and, or setting up drug prevention, uh, education, or something to, has, it has to do something with drug prevention or education.
But it doesn't, I know what Mr. Morgan pointed out, of, of the hundreds of man-hours, that, that, that first responders and police have to go, that takes them away from something else. So you, you're not really going to take some of these funds to help fund that, it's for prevention, training, and Narcan.
Or similar things, yeah.
Now, that's from the Kentucky, Kentucky also sued Purdue, and the, the money that we got first was from that settlement. So, I'm asking, do you think, because that had to be for Narcans and the things for every, you know, promoting drug-free, that, like, a case like this is state, national, would we require that, or could we use it for anything?
As far as I know, it has to go, I, as far as I know, and I can get clarification, it, it should, it needs to go to some kind of program, drug prevention, and Crystal, go ahead. I know you're dying.
So, so I did talk to someone on the state level today, um, I've got an email to the national level. So we have already got some from the Kroger one, I think that was started back in 22. Um, we've got some money from that that we have not used, and it is very specific, when I'm looking at, when I'm reporting right now, um, I've told the mayor, we've got to get together and get together with our police and fire department, because it's gonna, and I asked if we, they were going to have trainings. So they're doing a bunch of, um, questionnaires right now, and going to let us know what is, what is the best path to go with this money. Um, so I did talk to them, and then the national is supposed to get with me, she's out until Thursday, I think, and she's going to call me, because they gave me a name to contact, because we had already had some money come in, so I went back to see how much we had I think the reports keep changing.
They do.
On us.
The reporting requirements are, will change also according to the settlement funds. But I am unaware of any specific settlement that says you can only buy Narcan with these funds. Rather, it is something, it's earmarked, it's designated, the funds would be designated to do something to lighten the load of first responders, or to, uh, pay back, uh, costs associated with that, or to take proactive steps about helping the community. Um, and from my, my, um, my thoughts on this are that you, it's better to see what the, what you can do with the money, if you can get it, than say, no, we're, we just reject it out of hand and sight unseen. Um, you can see what the settlement, authorize the mayor to enter into these lawsuits, see what the settlements are, see what kind of restrictions there are, and then talk about whether you want to do that. But get the, get all that in place and, and authorize the mayor seems to me to be the best route on, on this.
Anyone else?
So, so, this group will, you get a settlement, and, and then they'll have the rules and regulations of what you can do with it, or what you can't do with it. And if you've got whatever the amount is, do you, do you have a, you have to have a responsible employee that's going to oversee this. I would hate to think you have to hire someone and pay them a salary, and you use the money to pay their salary.
Yeah.
I would see that would be the, the thing, that you've created a job that you might...
I, I, I don't...
Or might not get money for. That's, that's the sticking part.
I, I hear you.
Sorry, I have to say it that way.
I, I hear that question, but...
I can't see you having time, or Crystal, or anybody else that's going to sit around and...
Well, I don't, I don't think it's that much money, Kim.
Okay.
But right, I would tell you right now, we have received about eighty thousand dollars that's there. Now, honestly, I don't know how long it's been there, they asked us to account for it. Previous mayor, of course, did nothing, so it's sitting there, and I still have to account for it.
Sure.
Regardless, so, but it's eighty thousand dollars, I mean, uh, it might sound like a lot of money, but it's not going to go far, so I don't need to hire someone to handle that.
But if you got a, an Narcan and all this information to provide to, let's just say to take to, to the high school, or, that's a lot of paper, if you're handing out a piece of paper to say, don't do this. I'm just using that as a simple term.
I, I, I hear, I, I, it's a legitimate question. I do not believe it'll come to that. In fact, I, I would not allow that to come to that.
That's fine.
And, and for what it's worth, many of the settlement restrictions or, um, language about how the money's spent, uh, says specifically, you cannot use it for personnel, to hire somebody else.
Okay.
One of the groups that's out there, uh, Chan, Grant County Champions for Drug Free Grant County, they would be somebody we would partner with that would do that work for us. Would say, here's the money, you start your education program, or you, you buy the Narcan and you distribute it, get the things that you go to distribute it. So I think there's a, there's a mechanism in place, you know, for some of that money through them, for sure.
Yeah, I think Crystal's gone and contacted them, is the one right here. Right? She's got, oh, Jenna.
Um, I was just curious, do we have, like, just a idea of, you know, how many times our officers have had to go specifically, you know, undo a Narcan drug run?
Okay.
Is it...
We can ask the chief. Chief, can you...
Weekly, or...
I can get that number.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Well, back then, we were discussing what the actual take rate was from the lawsuit, so I went a couple of back and include it.
Right.
But as far as Narcan, we get ours from the Department of Freedom, so we don't pay anything for Narcan.
Oh, okay. Well, but maybe there are, like, these, like, some...
That's just an example, yeah.
Yeah, we can find out what we could use the money for, and then we can make the decision.
If you're looking for a motion on the resolution...
I am.
Make a motion that, uh, we, uh, accept resolution 2025 dash oh six.
Motion made by Councilor Skinner to adopt the resolution, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ronnie Mayne.
Mayor, may I ask a question before?
Yes, of course.
Uh, this would be to our attorney, uh, if we join the lawsuit, who pays for the lawsuit? Do we have to participate in paying for the lawsuit? Or do you, no? Would you know?
Uh, well, this lawsuit, as most other class actions, that I would expect dealing with opioids, and, um, there's a variety of other, uh, lawsuits going on, for example, um, they're called PFAS, they're forever chemicals, chemicals in the water, but I, I know Williamstown is a member of that class action lawsuit. All of those kinds of lawsuits, uh, the lawyer, the law firm representing the city, uh, pays the expenses, city does not pay the expenses, they receive a contingency fee, if there is some kind of, uh, award, whether that's through... They receive a contingency fee, if there is some kind of award, whether that's through a settlement, jury award, something like that.
Good question. Any other discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Kim Crapper.
Yes.
April Fabella.
Yes.
Ronnie Maynes.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
And Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, the resolution passes. Thank you, I appreciate it. And that is the end of our agenda. And I will take a motion to adjourn.
I make that motion.
Go ahead.
I make that motion.
Motion made by Councilor Smith.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Perry. On roll call?
Kim Crapper.
Yes.
April Fabella.
Yes.
Ronnie Maynes.
Yes.
Bob Perry.
Yes.
Rick Skinner.
Yes.
And Jenna Smith.
Yes.
Okay, we're done, thank you.